Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome all to a regularly scheduled meeting of Town Montgomery Planning Board for Monday, March 9, 2020. I guess our agendas are all gone, so we'll get right to the comment session. But ten minutes for comment session for items not on tonight's agenda. Please just identify yourself for the record. Yes, Donnie?
I'll yell it out. Don Berger, Montgomery, New York. Fred, what I want to just briefly bring up to you guys is that was very discomforting in the past couple of planning board meetings, that I find discomforting, and I think a lot of people find this comforting, is the fact that the attorneys for the applicants and their group of people within those applicants, they're keep bringing up the moratorium and how they need to have you guys rush things for the moratorium. Fred, you know we're looking to have a moratorium. I object to them always pushing you to that matter. I also would like to say, Fred, the moratorium that the town is looking at, I have a copy of it here, I'm sure you've seen a copy of it. It really falls short of what a moratorium is. There's too much garbage in this thing here. It's not a straight-out moratorium, there's too many provisions to it. And I would like this planning board to possibly consider having a discussion with the town board for the 18th of that moratorium law.
Anyone else? Barbara, you had to...
Hi, Barbara. Will you approve the site plan? For example, I was on-site today, there are now two access points on 17K. Originally, there was only one for construction that was approved. Who's, in whose purview is it to modify a site plan in agreement? Is that under yours, or is that building department?
We would approve the ability to have two, but the DOT would have the permitting responsibility.
There is another, here's another access point. It goes through the property owned by Orange County Water, then through my lands, and then across the part of the site. I thought also, in the original agreement, they were going to be removing trees within the construction area. There's about a sixty-foot strip between the wetlands and our property line. Where, I was there for maybe an hour today, and I saw that big tree coming down. All of the old growth is going to be gone. So that any sound barrier while you're working, any dust barrier, any site barrier is going to be gone. And it will take twenty years for their landscaping to grow back. They will all be gone by that time. They need to keep a better handle on what we approve before we just blanket approve just because somebody else told us it was going to be good.
Anyone else? Yes, Susan?
Hi, who's my mic? There's no mic, because I'm gonna talk really loud. I just wanted to actually agree with Mr. Berger. You've been without a decent comprehensive plan for decades. Why aren't you having the moratorium go right up to the FEIS, like you originally said? What, I'd like to know what it was that got in the cave. Why would you cave? You finally getting a comprehensive plan, you're finally gonna get a chance to have a plan in front of you that actually works. And I'd also like to know, since you've been all there for so long, what kind of ideas that you have that you've researched to bring to the comprehensive plan? Because some of the people that have been put on the committee were on one before, or have been sitting there the whole time moving with that one, and they didn't come up with any ideas. The other thing is, someone gave me this, I'm not gonna say who, but I find it disturbing. And perhaps you can put some clarity to what this means.
I want to clear the air regarding the social media statements that my having a real estate sales license may have influenced my decision-making as a member of the Town Montgomery Planning Board. I obtained my New York State real estate license in 2008, and I affiliated myself with the RJ Smith Realty Group. I entered the real estate sales field just as the 2008-2009 real estate market crash was beginning.
I guess I just put it all...
Excuse me, I have done with RJ Smith. I included my real estate license and affiliation with RJ Smith on my annual disclosure form as a planning board member and filed this with the Town of Montgomery Ethics Board. During this time, I recused myself from any planning board projects that were associated with the RJ Smith Group or any of his brokers. The real estate market crash, personal and family reasons caused me to go inactive around 2:10. I renewed my license in 2010 and 12 despite being inactive. My license expired in 2013. I've had no business dealings with the RJ Smith Realty Group since that time. Thank you.
The decisions on Medline and all that, you don't have any say on that at all?
I'm not a real estate license agent.
Bar's your name on his program? You must have set up a LinkedIn account, put your name on it for RJ Smith Realty.
I didn't do that.
Well, that's the only way you can do it, unless somebody else puts you on there.
Yes, Cherie, can you be the last one?
Thank you, I'll be right quick.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Board. I would just like to simply ask that in your assessing of the DEIS as you're getting ready to go for Medline, a very quick question is the last point addressing the impact magnitude of this project. It is declared by the New York State Office of Historic Preservation in Parks that as it is proposed as the current site plan, it will diminish the historical value of the town. I would like to make sure and ask, what have we done, and what is the mitigation for this type impact?
Thank you. Jeff, right?
Yep. Good evening, Board. So I'm really discouraged in the timeframe that these gigantic projects have been pushed forward. They're not even a notable mile away from each other. You have two million, over two million square feet of warehouse space being plopped in your backyard. And the attorneys for Medline, two weeks ago when they were here, they said, "The FEIS has to go through." And I said, "Why?" He says, "Because we own the property." The attorney, that attorney's not here tonight, okay? Because one of his other comments is like, "Let's get out of here," because he was angry that the board didn't act fast enough on their behalf. You're supposed to be here representing us, not these big gigantic companies, not RJ Smith. You're supposed to be representing the people that live in this area. It's absolutely disgusting. It's their property. Who cares if it's their property? Who cares? Thank you.
Okay. Next on our agenda this evening is Medline Montgomery, Medline Industries, Inc., New York State Route 416. It's a draft FEIS, a completeness discussion. This is a board completeness discussion. The public hearing on the site plan for Medline will resume on March 30th in this room. Of this year, of course. At 7:30, I believe. So the discussion the board's gonna have tonight is on the completeness of the final environmental impact statement. Board, do we have any comments, or...
Yeah, I circulated a couple minor changes to the visual section. Just softened the language a little bit.
Okay.
I don't think that they changed the intent of the document. I think that they just clarified the discussions that we had lighting consultant last week.
Okay, just some clarifications add to the document. Anyone else, Board?
There are a couple of issues outstanding.
Okay, the site plan, style issues?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Hey, we can't hear you back here.
All right.
It's okay.
I said I wanted to clarify a couple of issues for, before I agreed to accept the FEIS. One of them is I wanted to speak to Ryan, our lighting consultant, and make sure that he's gotten the lighting levels down to a level that he's comfortable with. There's been some drastic changes, but I just wanted to make sure I wasn't involved in a lot of the discussion. I just wanted to make sure you're comfortable.
Well, like I said at the workshop meeting, you know, I worked a lot with the lighting consultant, I talked to Bill once or twice.
Yep.
And, you know, I'm comfortable enough that the language in the FEIS as shown here meets the intent of what we're looking for. If we can make some changes going forward in the site plan, I think that we can and we should do that. But the text, I believe, matches what the planning board's intent is.
Okay.
And my second issue has to do with the site view from Interstate 84. At the last meeting, Attorney Larry Walensky said that if they didn't screen the loading docks, then they wouldn't accept a certificate of occupancy for this site. And it's not anything or any language at all that's been added to the FEIS document indicating that that's their intent. There still is a huge gap from I-84 across the drive where the trucks will be going down the 416 that can't be screened, or it will be extremely difficult to screen. And they have to figure out a way to do it still. There was a determination that the loading docks have to be screened just some fifteen months ago from the code enforcement officer. And I'm not satisfied that they've met that.
And I think that was gonna be a site plan note, correct, Bonnie?
Yes, it was in the FEIS scandal.
Okay. Anything else, Board? Okay. I believe we wanted to get committed as to when this was gonna be available to the public.
We, depending on the extent, if it's accepted tonight and we receive sufficient buyer's changes, we will endeavor to make them as soon as possible and hopefully have this printed by Friday. You know, endeavor to get it or sooner. We provided a draft of a notice of acceptance of completion, and on that, we committed to put the twenty-day minimum consideration period. And just keep on having a date, it's at April 2nd. As either twenty days after filing or April 2nd, so people will, you know, will know in case something happens that it wasn't there, but April 2nd would be twenty days from Friday. And it would also come this year, maybe on the 30th, where there will be public comments on the site plan. So you would have those comments as well in your consideration with time to adopt and consider.
Twenty days from filing or April 2nd?
Whichever is later. So if we get it filed by Wednesday or Thursday, it'll be April 2nd, even though it's twenty-one, twenty-two days. If we don't get it filed until Monday, whatever twenty days is.
Okay. Wait for it to understand? So then this will be put on the town's webpage and available to the public?
Yes.
Like the site plans are?
Number three libraries.
In the three libraries, and here in the building, in hard copy?
How does that work with our reading dates? Does that have anything to do with our reading dates, or...
Okay, so I entertain a motion to accept the FEIS as complete. Motion by John, seconded by Ryan. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion carried. Thank you, Judge.
Chairman, may I ask what our expectation is for the finding statement from that?
Sure. We'll hopefully have a draft by Friday.
Looking forward to ending this week.
Your document, but we'll have a draft, is what we believe.
Okay.
In anticipation of how long the board will have to work with it after...
It's your, I mean, we will endeavor to answer your questions as quickly as we can, as your decision. When to adopt it, we will be here, and we will respond as best we have to since October 3000.
So could possibly take more than the minimum?
Well, I don't know if there's any minimum, if there's a minimum consideration period. Then we will endeavor to, you know, answer all the questions we can commit, or if everyone will be prepared to believe we've work to do so far, you know, to accommodate your time period and get the information in and respond to your questions.
And thank you, Steve Alcoz.
Okay, thank you. Next this evening, we have National Builders LP and Rome paint trucking corp., 134 Neely Town Road Warehouse. SCU permit, site plan is a continuation of a public hearing. Representative Congressman Charlie Buzinoff, how are you, Charlie?
I'm good, great. How are you?
How we making out?
Since our last public hearing session and also since the work session, as the board may know, we were doing some additional field work to test some of the areas that had not been tested before, resulting from the drainage plan revisions with intent that's an occupied building. Chazen has completed that work, a lot more than last week. The results all look good, except for one area where one of the bio-retention basins would go. Perk was not good at that spot, so we're gonna commit not to mine that particular basin. And again, it's just a top drainage basin, so for the bio-retention basin. That's pretty much what the field work has shown. From that, speaking for Dave, that Chazen is working on revising, the swift revising, the drainage plan to answer Mr. Featherstone's comments. And we would hope to get that information to the board by the end of this week. So we believe the drainage questions will all be answered by the end of the week. The other issue that had to come up in Major's review is about traffic, and specifically about the new requirements for analyzing whether you need a left turn or a right turn into the site. Again, Chazen's working on that right now. If it does turn out, as I said to the board before, if it does turn out with the new analysis that we do have to construct a left-hand turn lane into the site, we don't see that as a problem. We would commit to do it. It's not through the very wide right away that the county has there. I think maybe it's only seventy feet wide on our side. So if the analysis let's show we need that left-hand turn lane, we don't see any problem with property acquisitions or permitting issues, we're hoping board enough for him to do that. But we'll also have that updated analysis into the board by the end of this week. Right, I think those are the two issues that we have out there. Still, not outstanding, but we need additional analysis based on Mr. Featherstone's comments.
Okay. Go ahead, David.
I'm sorry, the traffic, we're hoping to have by the end of the week. We may not be able to get to that, but it'll be at least early next week.
Okay. The new drainage soon and the traffic analysis also.
Right. And just two other issues, too, where we have turned in a revised, I shouldn't say revised, but a landscaping plan that addresses your consultants' comments, who wait to hear back about whether that's satisfactory or not. And then on lighting, as we've discussed before, we have revised the lighting plan to bring it down to the levels that it was originally approved by Mr. Kelly last fall. Haven't gotten a confirmatory response back yet about that. It is at the levels that it was previously...
So the lighting and landscaping, the traffic, and the new drainage are planned soon? All right, as this is a continuation of a public hearing, of a public hearing, we'll entertain comments and questions from the audience. Just please, if we don't know who you are, please let us know your name for the record. Anybody with any comments or questions on 134 Neely Town? Yes, Don?
Again, Don Berger, Montgomery, New York. The only thing I got to say is since they're bringing so much back, the end of the week, next week, next month, following month, whenever they bring this stuff back, I'm asking this board to keep the public hearing open.
No one else from the audience? Board, any questions or comments on 134 Neely Town?
I have some questions about fencing and such, going back to this, maybe with the lighting, et cetera.
Yeah, I think Mr. Kelly's working on the lighting, and Karen has the newest plan, so she'll be reviewing that. Which we haven't even seen yet, I don't believe, right? The new landscaping?
No, that was turned in February.
February 5th, we got a plan, and that's the most up-to-date landscaping?
Right.
Right, that, because I know there was a comment about where the trees were to be planted?
Right.
Okay, that addresses...
That will be adjusted on the plan for a review on Friday.
Gotcha.
That comment was brought up by Mr. Featherstone.
Yeah, the guidelines for where you can plant your limestone graves.
Right.
Anyone else, Board? Okay. We have this plan we need to look at. We'll get the traffic next week. The landscaping, there'll be some adjustments to that that we'll get on Friday. I'm guessing it would probably be best with all of this stuff outstanding, just to continue this hearing on the 30th? Or what do you think?
I agree.
7th, or 8th, on the 30th? So we'll reconvene this hearing on the 30th of this month at 7:45. This will be the public's notice. You won't get anything in the mail. And then we'll see, a motion, we got a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Jay will be back, so we'll see on the 30th. Thank you. Okay, and next this evening, we've got Brackett Road Properties LLC, Brackett 20 Warehouses, Brackett Road Leonard's Drive, SCU Permit Site Plan, and Two Lots Subdivision. This is also a continuation of a public hearing. Hi, how are you?
Johnny, her, and Jason. I'll leave the site plan comments to Dave.
Okay.
But as we discussed at the workshop last Wednesday, state law would require that before the public hearings, for subdivision, be even open, required determination, certificate of ownership. And the board informed us that they weren't comfortable having that done for tonight. They wouldn't have enough time to review a determination. So tonight, I would ask the board to consider if they would debate verbally having one and have one prepared for the next meeting on the 30th, if they want to let it through tonight. And I will point out, we've had landscaping, updated landscaping for a while, and we haven't gotten comments back yet.
Yeah, she's away. Bill had signed off on the lighting, and I think you're okay with suing to, correct? Okay. David, if you could update us on how you made out with the drainage that we discussed Wednesday?
Well, the plans were submitted last Friday. So they basically are under review by Andy. Mr. Featherstone.
Andrew, reviewing the drainage?
I have it tonight.
Okay.
I sent electronically on Friday.
Okay. This is a continuation of a public hearing. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to say a few words, have a couple of questions or comment or concerns, feel free. Yes, Cherie?
Thank you, sir. Makes it more efficient. Thank you. Dear Chairman, Board, Shreer's Hawkes Town Montgomery. The following was given as a zone, as zone law, replied to my public comment concerning parking areas placed in the defined front yard setback. That being the minimum of sixty feet for Collector Arterial Road by the building inspector. Section 3020, definitions of words and terms, section 904070 dot 10, 904070 dot 20, front yard setback overlay district for various public highways in all districts, and section 140-50-33, site layout setbacks for material collector roads, outside storage, parking, landscaping requirements. I believe that was contained in his letter. Using 30-20 Zone Law definitions of the line, front, excuse me. In 3020, Zone Law defines of line, lot front, and yard front, and street. If I, if you need, I could reference them as, as street is being defined as any federal, state, county, or town road and any street that shows up on this subdivision plaque. A lot line front is defined as a front lot line and required front yard for property facing two or more streets shall be all the lines and all the yards fronting on said streets. Yard front zone definition uses the distance from the roof portion of the building on the front of the line of the lot, the front line of the lot. Therefore, it also can be determined that this plaque, using these definitions in the law, defines this property as two front yards and as it is adjacent to two streets. It can also be defined as a corner lot in this section. I understand and agree with the inspector's determination that this lot plaque does not meet the definition of being specifically listed in the affected front yards in the overlay district. That would be 90-40-70 dot 10 and dot 20. I understand that by the inspector's interpretation of our Zone Law, Brackett Road is not defined as a collector road. Using these sightings of the Town of Montgomery Zone Law, the issue of parking areas in the front yard was deemed acceptable, by my understanding. Zone Law also defines parking lots, parking spaces, and items defining what parameters they must adhere to via multiple sections. I will not state them, but if requested, will provide those addressing these various aspects concerning this issue. It does, in the Collector and Arterial section, state that once the front yard frontage is met, parking shall be allowed with a proper screening and be, parking shall be located in the sides or rear yards and/or front yards of a private commercial access drive. Section 90103010 states that in a non-residential district, accessory all-street parking may be placed within required side or rear yards. It does not appear that the front yard parking areas are located on a private commercial access drive. By the inspector's, Karen clarification eliminates them from being considered under the... the collector arterial stipulations allowing front yard parking after setback. Section 40, in applications of regulations, 40 dash 10, provisions are to be specific. The provisions of the zoning law shall be deemed to be specific. Those matters for which there are no specific provisions in this zoning law shall be deemed to be prohibited. There is no specific provision in the Town of Montgomery Zone Law stating that the accessory used parking, parking lot is permitted in a defined front yard. Therefore, by extension of our zone law, parking space, parking areas are not permitted in a defined front yard. They may be placed according to 901030 dot 10 in a side or rear yard. I could find nowhere in our zone, back and forth, upside down, backward and forward, in our zone, where it states parking lots may or shall be allowed in a front, uh, front yard, other than those few areas where they discuss in the frontage of a collector yard, uh, a collector, uh, or arterial. If, if you could tell me where it is in the zone, I'm willing to learn, but I have spent five days seeking what that front yard definition is in defining the parking lots. The only time it discusses these front yards are in fact in the item that I spoke. And since it's not specifically stated in our zone law, it has a specific allotment and a permitted use, and by definition, he has two front yards on the one corner lot and the other is a front yard, it is not a collector road, it is deemed a rural road. There is nothing in our code that gives a specific permission for this allowance. It allows side and rear. Now, of course, you can go to the ZBA and try to author that, but again, it is not a permitted use by our zone code that I can locate. I'm looking to learn, because I'm killing myself trying to find it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, I'm sorry, I did, I do have two copies. Sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Making noise here.
Anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, first, I would disagree with the categorization of the inspector's determination of the code. Secondly, the inspector's role is to interpret the code and instruct the board as to what is and is not permissible, and the board is to follow the inspector's interpretation. Lastly, the use is not a use, so to speak, as it would be a use versus a single-family dwelling versus a residences, but it's prohibited when not explicitly provided for. So, the inspector's interpretation was clear that not only was Brackett Road not a collector road, that as a separate issue entirely, that parking is permitted in the front yard where it was proposed.
May I?
Sure.
Hi, thank you. The early time it is allowed in a front yard in our zone law is when it's defined as an arterial or collector road after sixty foot setback, as defined on Brackett Road in the table of, of definitions in the areas, right, when you go to that table, look, help me, somebody, you know what I'm talking about. It is not, anything in here is not describing residential, this is all specific to industrial uses. It also states that what a front yard is. It also says that parking lots are accessory uses, and therefore defined as an accessory use. Those accessory use are not defined anywhere in the book, other than by a side giving rear yard. So he did correctly state, and I concur, that it's not a collector road, it does not fit in the overlay district, but therefore, because it's not specifically defined in the code in any place, shape, or form, it is not a permitted use by law. Now, he does not, that I know of, have the right to go against what is permitted and not permitted, that is before the ZBA. And I tell you, I have studied this for three weeks.
Nobody else does.
Mr. Chairman, as, as the inspector's interpretation, it says buildings only required sixty foot setback, I just.
Anyone else, any comments on this Brackett 20, yes, Barbara?
No, it's not discussing the, 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 this is specific to this project, but also to many others. This is exactly why we need an updated comprehensive plan, and updated and well-defined codes in our zoning code book, because everybody has a different interpretation, and we have to go back to the letter of the code, which is what Cherie did. It's not, these things are not up to interpretation. Before we move forward with more of these projects, get our codes defined.
Anyone else? More any comments, questions? Sir, Andrew, you're working on the drainage?
Well, yes, we just got it.
Reviewing the drainage, was there any? Yes, Brad?
Fred Burris, Village of Montgomery, and I just have a observation, and gotta think back why everything was zoned the way it was, and go back to that and think. Wetlands are there for a reason, so why are we disturbing by putting a warehouse in the area? Or an impervious parking lot, or any other building whatsoever? They're supposed to be there to protect the land, and, um, so why are we disturbing? Why are we issuing special exemption use permits to put stuff that doesn't belong there? Thank you.
Yeah, Donnie?
Yeah, Don Berger, Montgomery. Uh, you know, this goes back to what I said when I first made my comment earlier today, uh, you know, me, I'm a resident of this town, and I'll tell you, I really get sick and tired of these applicants coming in here with their attorneys or whoever it is, and it just seems that they're, they're bullying tactic, you know, they're, they're telling us what to do. They don't have a right to tell us what to do. And furthermore, we have other letters that Walt, Walt, has signed that has been a problem. So maybe somebody needs to talk to Walt.
That's right.
Any comments, questions? All right, so, we're really narrowing it down, but what we have to look at here, correct?
I agree.
Consultants, um, and we got this application, we opened a hearing for Brackett 20 quite a while ago, and we have a hundred and twenty days to close the hearing on a subdivision, so that's up this week, November 12th. Um, I mean, it's just a, a few things, or what were you going to feel about closing the hearing?
Andrew looked at the stormwater, I mean, it's, it's not gonna affect the site plan layout at all, or?
Well, I'm pretty sure it does.
Yeah.
And then, um, this issue with the parking in the front yard, are we gonna, are we gonna figure that out in the next sixty-two days? That's, that's, I think it's.
Sorry.
Okay.
Code official made this rule.
I haven't seen that correspondence, so.
But doesn't that go before the DVA?
No. No, it has to go to. We don't. Yeah, we, we should be in your packet somewhere.
Not before.
Quick question.
Um, sure, Corey.
You're saying you got your ruling from Walter on that?
Code enforcement officer made a ruling?
So what is far? Isn't far doing your industrial?
He's doing the inspections on the.
What he doesn't rule, he doesn't do it.
He's not doing code enforcement, I don't think.
So it goes right to Walter, it's only Walter then?
Yeah. So, we, we have our, our letter, we also know that we're not drastically changing the site plan. We're not prepared to create any improvement, but we are against the timeframe to close the hearing, which is one twenty from reopening, because it's a, it's a subdivision. Are you comfortable with closing the hearing?
No.
On this?
Oh, yeah, yeah, hurry up, closing, closing.
All right, closing. Andrew, you think we should close the hearing?
Brackett 20?
Took, put asphalt everywhere.
Right, by Ryan, seconded by Rich, all is in favor, signify by saying aye? Thank you. Okay, next, this evening, we have Autumn Sky Development Company, Inc., North Drury Lane, SCU, site plan two lot subdivision, up for secret determination, now we got this.
Can the board make a decision if it would like to authorize directing the NAGDACK to the next year, next year?
I think we're gonna start working on the NAGDACK there, Autumn, or, I'm sorry, for, for Brackett 20.
So we'll be on the.
Um, we have to get a document put together and get it circulated and agreed upon above the four months amongst the board members, and we'll be in touch.
All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, um, Autumn Sky Development, North Drury Lane. Now, um,
Oh, okay.
This one, the question for hearing, it's, well, two months ago, um, I believe a question about the well got resolved, the, the health department sent this back, did you, did, did, did you see that, Ryan?
I saw the response, I, I didn't know.
I think it's, 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 right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, um, the one in the front of Long North Drury.
He said it's proposed well that lot over in East Quarter.
Oh, no, there is one existing pump house to be removed prior to starting construction, or by the, by the entrance, there's a proposed well for Project Nine filed map? Okay, um.
There's no well by the barn on the side.
Yeah, this is a different one, Rich. Okay, now, according to the health department, they have guidelines for separation from a boundary line to a well, correct?
Yes.
And on an outside lot line, it's different than an interior.
That's correct.
That's how it's explained.
Yep.
That proposed well, that was put on the old file map, now that this is a new, a new project, I would think it would come under the new guidelines, correct?
Yeah, I would, I would suggest that we take that well off at the entrance, if that's a proposed well from a prior subdivision, prior.
Yeah, we're gonna just move that, that's, that, we're not using that well, it's just.
But it's on the plan, and it doesn't, it, it, it's against the side unit.
It's against the front, it's right against the front boundary line?
It doesn't, yeah, it doesn't, I mean, the, the.
Yeah, but we're not, we're not, that's just, we're just, it's a typo, really, we're not using that well.
No, it should be removed from the plan.
Yeah, just exactly.
That would be the easiest thing to do.
It's not an actual.
Gotta remove the well.
No, no. Well, it doesn't have a septic either, even if you're gonna put a well on.
The other, the well's okay.
There's only one well for the property.
You, you have one well for the property, but there's a proposed well on Drury Lane.
We have a proposed well where? Where, there's no.
By the front, by the self-storage.
There's no well, that, that's an old, we're, we're removing, that's a big.
No, there's a second one.
It says proposed, it, it's, it's, it's a typographical area, it should be removed from the plan.
There's no water for the storage, it's just a self-storage.
Right, but you.
That's a ti- it's a typo.
Okay.
Not, not in my case.
Now, there was a, an issue on the legend?
Well, I have a question, um, the subdivision map shows hatch marks, and so I went to the legend to see what the hatch mark means, and I couldn't find it. So I was gonna ask Mike if you were here tonight.
Crosshatch?
Yeah.
It's all weapons.
Crosshatch is weapons.
It's all weapons.
Is that Army Corps weapon, or is that a legend?
No, there's, there's probably a claw out somewhere. It's not a legend, that's, yeah, I know that's what it is, the, uh, the flag.
Delineation, a wetland delineations and numbers, the F4 and F5, so. But reviewing the plans today, just, I worked on a graph, NAGDACK, um, I didn't see the transitional yard on the subdivision map, but maybe on the site plan, the site plan's around fourteen sheets, but since the subdivision map is what gets filed account, we bought up, they bought up on the RE2, and our transitional, as the board knows, fifty feet, it's either fenced or heavily landscaped. And I didn't see that on the subdivision map, maybe it's on the site. But that part of the septic, at least part of the reserve and part of the initial, I think that, as far as I can tell, although Mike doesn't draw us the fifty-foot line, but on a one-to-quarter scale, I can rough it out. So I think that's an issue for, as a conditional pool, and then, unless I'm missing something, that's clearly the transitional yard right there.
Right.
Again, maybe it's on the site plan, but I didn't see it on this map. The transitional yard is, is fifty feet, and it's gotta be on the commercial side.
Commercial side, and it's gotta be left alone, right?
And it's gotta be, and further, it's gotta be the fenced or landscaped, now the board's story is down with the landscaping, because especially stockade plenty, that's the whole lot over the line.
Yeah.
So I, I think that the landscape plan on the site plan sheet, I wonder if I might find it, and I need to see if they're reading it, so I don't know. I don't think it's an issue to add it, but it's what our code requires.
Do you have the site plan map too?
Yeah, we do.
We got it. The site, you're saying it's on the sub, on the subdivision map?
Yeah, right here.
Okay, it's on the site. What's that? Believe it's on the site plan now.
All right, well, I'd rather get on the, sorry, you can get on the subdivision map as well.
I think you showed.
I was a little concerned about the.
I'm sorry?
I was a little concerned about not seeing nearby, you know, how far away they are and how, which they.
Sir, do you have the, the, uh, site plan?
I have the site plan, um,
It's on that.
I'm looking for the landscaping plan, there should be landscaping.
I mean, you have to abide by the site plan, so the subdivision.
Yeah, there's no landscaping shown in the transition yard, and we've got a portion of the septic system in the transition yard. It's on, the landscaping plan is eighteen and twenty. Wetlands, wetlands added to the, remove that well, wetlands added to the legend. Show the, um, show the transition yard on the, on the subdivision plaque.
Is it on the site plan map?
On, the dash line is shown, it's not labeled, I don't believe. I'm just, I'm starting to make a list of things that are outstanding that we need to, to look at here.
The other thing, Fred, was at some point, we were expecting to get an actual survey by a surveyor, we keep being told that we're gonna be supplied one, but I think that Mike keeps signing the subdivision map.
Um, the subdivision plan is actually signed out by Dan Janosch?
Is it?
Yes. Um, should, uh, transition yard. Um, show, uh, transition yard and landscaping in it.
Is it possible to get conditional subject for these kind of, these are, these are pretty, we've been here for like a year now, like eleven revisions, this is like very, very minor stuff, we've had eleven times we've done.
Well.
Yeah, yeah, I think I tried to make that clear.
That's awful. I know, I know, I'm not saying it's important, I'm just saying it's very, it's a pretty simple thing, it's not like that controversial, it's pretty, you know.
Yes, and I know that, you just reminded me Rose.
The Culverman Fire Department, the commissioners and the fire chief requested a door.
Access in the back.
Well, we'll add that on, but that's a condition, that's a conditional, we have.
Yeah.
One other issue, and Bonnie caught it, I didn't, Bonnie read the SWIP, and you talk about a conservation area to be protected, is in the SWIP? And this is the first time hearing that at all.
I don't, I'm not, I'm definitely making a mistake.
Yeah, I mean.
I don't, I don't think, I think that's just a typo problem, there's no.
And your SWIP says that, uh, bare ground can remain for three weeks before it's seeded, and I just asked Andrew, as minimum is fourteen days. On big projects, we go down to seven days, you know, on sailfish. So, there's a couple things in the SWIP that really have to be looked at. If there's a protected area, that's probably good for the town, but I'm hearing about it today, it's the first time, so it's in the SWIP, I think that's why.
Andrew, Andrew, do you have any comment about that? About, about the?
No. I don't, I don't know what you're looking for.
No, well, he said the conservation, I mean, I, I didn't, that part I'm not familiar with, but okay.
Yeah.
Understood. Um.
There, there's reference to a conservation easement in the SWIP, in the back, or the table bar.
Okay.
They're getting credit for it, so I think it just has to be looked at.
Okay.
Um, other areas are just, I could not find anywhere an actual limits of disturbance. I see fences, as far as sole fences, et cetera, but there should be a limits of disturbance on the plan, so we know the whole area that's gonna be disturbed.
And there should be an acreage shown too, correct?
Correct, that, exactly, I feel like that's actual number.
Yes.
Okay.
And the, what, right to this?
Um, it was unclear, so, you know, I'm looking at the set of information that I have, um, in my files, uh, the inheritance. There's, on the plan, it says in terms of internal circulation, uh, the warehouse can accommodate W V forty trucks for deliveries, but then it says only one W sixty-two truck can obtain access at any time. Is that in addition to the W forty trucks? I mean, do we understand what that means?
It's point three.
I understand like the sixty-two and forty is the length, but it says at any time. So, can you have a combination of forty and seventy-sixty-two, and only one sixty-two, what are these?
I'm not sure about that, I mean, Mike would not, not sure.
Yeah, I mean, to the best of my recollection, there's a very limited turning radius to the south of the warehouse building. So I imagine it means that if there is a large truck that is backed into one of the loading docks, you cannot move another truck in that area.
Right, any other truck, or just the thirty-sixty-two truck, and that, that's my question, like what happens?
Large truck is very limited turning radius space.
Um, the, uh, in terms of hours of operation, it says the warehouse will be opening up to five to eleven, and it says self-storage and it's up twenty-four access. What's not indicated, or is, is this every day of the week? I don't, I don't know what the hours of operation.
For, for the self-storage? Yes, every day of the week for the self-storage.
For self-storage, every day, and then what about the warehouse?
What are the hours of operation for what, what was it for the day?
Um, you had five AM to eleven PM, my question is on what days? Is it every day the warehouse is operating?
Every day, that, is it, you mean, is it seven days a week or five days a week, is that what you're?
I think that's what we.
Yeah, Monday through Friday.
You've got a time, but we don't have the days.
Every, every day.
So each one, seven days a week, they'll be operating. Um, when I ran, uh, the environmental resource map, um, the Indiana Act was flagged, I didn't see any notes about tree cutting. Um, I also haven't been able to find a New York City DEC response, but that might be my file, so I have to work with this one this. But, again, I can see a tree cutting requirement or something.
But that, that, that's a standard thing, and, and the act applies to every property everywhere, it's.
Yeah, but I didn't see a note at all.
Uh, it's just, you wouldn't even put a note, because it's just.
Yeah, no, you do put a note on the plan, that's how the boards know when you're allowed to treat that.
I mean, goes by, goes by the DEC regulations, so.
Just, just have Mike, um, put it on the plan.
Um, exactly. Mike suggested, um, that there had to be coordination through the secret process with New York City DEP. But, I don't, no, I don't think, it wasn't on the, uh, circulation notice that I saw. I believe Rich thought that it might have gone out for public hearing to New York City DEP, which then, if that, so we have to see who received notice for public hearing.
The D, the DEP received notice, they were notified.
On public notice, for the public hearing?
Absolutely, yes.
And the town, the Newburg Town Clerk also, we went through this.
They were notified.
Okay.
So that was clarified, that was done, yeah.
Okay.
Anything else?
I don't think we ever heard from DEPs. It's not so common.
One time.
It's unfortunate, but it's.
Not unusual.
No. We, we had to, gentlemen, it was very helpful, one time, another project, and it seemed like such, that was a rumor.
Those were, that's always the vitamins I had embedded in the neg deck graph.
Okay.
Answers.
Um. Possible. We circulated, uh, uh, the graph to the board, and then maybe run to Mike in case he has.
Yeah.
Maybe that would be the best.
Yeah, if I, if I put holes in there, then.
Then he can fill in the blanks.
Exactly. Um, so we just talked about the wells, so the, so you, not only is there this, um, remnant well that you're showing from a prior.
Right.
Approval, you're also showing your remnant septic system. So, it, probably the best thing to do is to take them off.
Yeah, okay.
Chairman, this is the site plan issue. Septic yields are in the transition.
Well, Mike's gotta address that in the landscape, even the transition yard. So I'm asking, I'm sure it was done, but you, you've gotta make some amendments there. Yeah, so you can't clear it?
Absolutely, it can't condition.
No, no, we need that, we need an answer on that.
Fred, do we need to identify those delining, delining the pipelines, the way we did on Bailey Road?
I, I, I think what we would, oh, with, um.
With a marker?
There were more that weren't pointed.
Well, they were flagged?
Yeah, there's flags out there, the flags.
The flags were out there to re.
Need more permanent?
Yeah.
Permanent marker?
I, I, I think where you have one user or a building, it's not as, not as, um, it's not as a demanding use as it would be if it were a bunch of kids running around. So. You know, clearing limits will need to be delineated, which we're asking them to do, but they'll be during the construction process, so they don't, they don't encroach on any of these adjacent areas. But, let's try to get a good clean draft quickly, and get it to Mike so we can fill in the holes, anything, and, um. When we get that all together, then we can look to make a decision, is that better? I, I think there's just too many things to answer here.
Fred, I have one more thing on this.
Sure, Ryan.
Uh, at some point, and I don't remember when it was, it never been in the plan set, but there's a new sign detail, and maybe I, I didn't see this before, but it doesn't look like something that Bill would approve. It's got internal, um, internally lit, it's like a ten foot by ten foot sign.
Really?
So.
Okay.
I don't know if anybody's really seen that. Quick page, it's the last one. It's received February third.
The pylon sign?
Right.
Okay.
So, we could at least reach out to Bill and find out if that was on the lighting plan that he approved, especially since.
And sheet twenty of nineteen, uh, nineteen of twenty was the one that he, the last revised, twelve twenty-six, two thousand nineteen, um.
I don't know, he doesn't want internally lit signs, so that's the only reason I'm.
Yeah.
It is.
That's a huge, that's a huge.
Yeah, that is, we'll have Bill look at that. All of that's here. We can get him a copy of this, won't we, soon? We'll give Bill a copy of that. All right. That makes sense, so we got the line, anything else? Sign and the door, we have. You have. Truck maneuvering. Limits of disturbance in the area of disturbance. The well in front. Cross hatch to the way. Septic on the side and landscaping in the, uh, transition.
On the SWIP, we've got that, two things in the SWIP.
The two things in the SWIP that we're showing.
The conservation, what was the other one, you said, the conservation?
Yes.
Yeah.
And the other one was that it says the bare ground can remain unseeded.
No, bare ground is.
Longer than.
Right. Okay. We'll try to get a neg deck out to everybody soon, if we can, or something like that, okay, thank you. Um. Next, rect introductory local law number three of year twenty twenty, establishing a six-month moratorium recommendation to town board. Um, I circulated a memo in the last week, I touched it up a little bit, everybody get a chance to see that?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yeah, the moratorium, we discussed it briefly at the workshop. Basically, it says. We don't have to. Yeah, we wanted to add, just edit it some so the town, the town board would have it, because this is the last time we meet before they open the hearing on a moratorium. A concern we wanted to share in regard to buildings under forty thousand square, square feet, is that the forty thousand square foot limit should be cumulative area per lot, per parent lot. Um, this would prohibit an applicant from using this exemption to propose more than one building on a site, or to subdivide into several smaller warehouses. So, you have one piece of property, you get one forty, less than forty thousand, three days, that's it. Sound good to everybody? Anything else you wanted to add?
I think we said everything we wanted to say in our original memo, with the thresholds and all that.
Okay.
This is a good addition.
Okay. All right, um, entertain a motion to forward this over to the town board, those additions by John, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, um. We have a slower minutes here. Let's see. Now, M two, oh, January eighth, the two, we can't do because Jay's not here. And I will be here.
Yeah, I don't. I don't think we're ever able to approve minutes, because four members present at the time we approved the bill.
So we'd never be able to do it.
So, so what is FAR?
Well, excuse me, the law does not require that you approve minutes. I would suggest that Sue make the edits and file them, and excuse me, note that they were not approved, but still filed.
So they'd be on. Yeah, we did that, all right, so we don't, don't need your motion.
I don't think you can.
We can.
Um, of all six sets of minutes, this one though, um, and I made a note to, so I just wanna call the board's attention on camp properties, it's a long one, this one. It says, uh, the word not was left out, and changed the whole name, so we stuck the word not back in, and I won't bore you with the context, but it shows you how one, three letters work.
Sorry.
Okay, um. Let's see, now, one, two, three, we don't have enough for twenty-nine feet, so we need, and we will never. Because Bill's gone? No, if Jay was here, we could.
Yes.
So that, we'll have to hold off on that. Okay, September twenty-fourth, let's see, count heads here, one, two, that we have four. Right, right, but, um, Rich and, and John and Ryan were. Okay, so anybody got anything on, uh, Monday, September twenty-fourth of two thousand eighteen? Okay, nothing too substantive?
No.
So, um, entertain a motion to accept, uh, adopt September twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen planned board meeting minutes. By, um, John, seconded by Ryan, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Okay, um. Uh, May twenty-eighth of two thousand nineteen. Let's see, one, two, we got four. Anything, anybody with anything, those, uh. A few little edits, okay, I entertain a motion to, uh, adopt, May twenty-eighth, two thousand nineteen, uh, planned board meeting minutes by Ryan, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
January thirteenth, two thousand nineteen.
Two thousand twenty-five.
I had a couple notes on that, that was.
Okay. All right, uh, entertain a motion to adopt, January thirteenth of twenty twenty, by Ryan, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
February fifth, uh, twenty twenty, the workshop meeting minutes. Straightforward, discuss it thus, okay?
The only addition I made, too, it was a duly noticed workshop, just so the reader understands that workshops are legal, planning board means. And then, uh, this was when you did the nine fifteen with seventeen K. I added all board members received prior drafts last week, meaning the week before this meeting, as opposed to we were handed a resolution back that day.
Uh, entertain a motion to adopt those minutes, February fifth, twenty twenty, by Rose, seconded by John, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And then, uh, February tenth, twenty twenty, meeting minutes. Bunch of hearings.
Felt like just yesterday, I was reading.
Yeah, I bet. Um, if there's nothing of substance to, I'll, I'll entertain a motion to adopt those, uh, February tenth, twenty twenty, board meeting minutes by Ryan, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May and Ryan.
And last but not least, a motion to adjourn, I'll let them, by Ryan, seconded by Rose, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody.